Mr. Parker.
Here. Okay, so we have five members present. We do have a courtroom. And I do need to note that Mr. Marconi, while present, is remote. Bo Mia Di Maria, Ms. Diana Lewis, the student rep, Ms. Cardello, Ms. Pineresi, and Ms. Sani have contacted me to let me know that they had previous conflicting engagements for tonight. So with that, if we can all rise and salute the flag.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so thank you. So the first item of business is the notice of the public hearing on the fiscal year 22 school budget. And if I read what was posted, the Everett School Committee in accordance with national law, Chapter 71, Section 38N will hold a public hearing on the subject of the proposed fiscal year 22 school budget on Tuesday, April 27th at 6:00. Sorry, we're late. The public can view this meeting on the Everett Public Schools Facebook page at facebook.com/everettpublicschoolsone word, as the meetings are not yet open to the public. So with that, I will open up the public hearing to hear from the public. Normally, I would ask who was opposed, who was against, but that would be in a live setting, so therefore, since we are entertaining public comment remotely, when you are invited to speak, please state your first name and your, I'm sorry, your full name and your address clearly, and you have two minutes to speak. So if we can open up to the public, Mr. Celestin?
First, we have Ms. Rose Jean Pierre.
Hi, my name is Rose Jean Pierre. You guys said that I had to state my address?
Please.
8 Russell Street. I am currently a senior at Everett High School. And regarding the budget for the new program, they're trying to start the three-year program at the high school. I'm for it because, as an immigrant child, I'm a child of immigrants, and that's a lot of, that's a story for a lot of students at Everett High School. If we had, if I had a program, a three-year program to help me with the college process, with all the things that I needed for the future, it would be very helpful because due to my parents like not speaking full English, and my parents not knowing all the things that the college process has in FAFSA and all things like that, I had to rely on the school for guidance, and because of the 2021, 2020 to 2021 school year, it's very virtual. So although I did receive some guidance from the schools, all virtual, and like if we had a three-year program that dates all the way back to my sophomore year, I would be stronger. I would know more about what to do for the future because honestly, I feel like a lot of the students at Everett High right now are lost. And we have little to no guidance, although the school provides us some of it, but we could get a lot more.
Okay, thank you, please, Tim. In your input. Next speaker, please.
Ms. Jessica Boots.
Hi, I'm really sorry. I didn't know how to enter the speaking queue, so I guess someone entered me in the speaking queue. Thank you. My name is Jessica Gold Boots. I am a Everett resident and a member of the MTA Board of Directors, Region 21G. And I am here to encourage members of the school committee to not, not pass or not move forward with any budget that only has funding from the city at the foundational level. With everything happening this year, with the coronavirus pandemic, with learning loss that has happened through the school year, and with so many other concerns, we need more funding than ever, not less. I realize that there will be funding coming in from the CARES Act, but that funding is very specifically prescribed for very specific supports and not for the things that I know will be needed more than ever, especially in this coming school year, such as more staff, better funded staff, and wraparound supports. As a resident and a concerned member of the MTA Board of Directors, I would just really want to see a budget that goes above and beyond the foundational funding from the city, and I hope that members of the school committee and city council can support and advocate for that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time, and I think for the record, Ms. Gold Boots lives at Amos Drive?
Oh, yes. How, how did you know? I live on 3 Amos Terrace in Everett.
There you go. Thank you for your time, Ms. Gold Boots. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Corey McCarthy.
Hello, everyone. Hello, esteemed members of Everett Public School Committee. My name is Corey McCarthy. I live in Matapa in Mass. I am the current vice principal at Everett High School. Ms. Celestin, can you hear me? Yes. Let me start by saying this. Our students never forget who shows up for them when the times are tough. Everett High School students are the most phenomenal collection of students I've ever had the privilege to be around. Many come to us with adult problems, not shielded by the very circumstances that challenge them. They simply just put up with it. When we teeter on return dates, they put up with it. When we are not prepared to serve them, they put up with it. When the state asks some of them to return just for a standardized test, they're put up with. They put up with it. When people talk about mental health and social, emotional learning, like it is some mythical concoction made up by the TikTok generation, when they are suffering from like isolation and anxiety and depression, they put up with it. So with all due respect, as someone who has been on the receiving end of their empathy with so many Everett High School students who check on my personal well-being, I am not going to let the scholars of Everett put up with it anymore. Especially negotiations that may adversely affect our children. No gesture says, "I am here for our scholars" more than "we will pay for it" or "we got you." We have to swallow our pride sometimes and say, "I may not have it, but I will find a way." Like, we can't afford to just break even on our students anymore. We must invest not just in their literacy and numerical and arithmetic acquisition, skill acquisition. We must invest in their access. Learning loss only will affect schools who want to return the same, with the same resources. We need the funds to pull the upset on, on the COVID deficit. We need the funds to cultivate, create, curate supplemental and enrichment programming. And finally, we need the funds to continue to put great adults in front of students with the expertise that's, that's like contagious, and our outcomes will continue to reflect the city centered on students black, Asian, white, Latinx, and more. School districts who thrive on a vision driven by an access comprised of student efficacy, creativity, development, and the ownership of learning. I tell people this all the time. I quit my job years ago and became employed by students. That means I'm committed to that messy car over what being overwhelmed and underappreciated, like every educator is, and that lifestyle, they deserve, because our kids deserve every dollar we just scrape, crawl, and find to contribute to their educational quality of life. Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
Ms. Lori Pierre.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Pierre.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Ann Lori Pierre.
Okay, if you state your, you stated your name, can you just state your address, please?
I'm an Everett resident.
Okay. You have the floor.
All righty, perfect. Well, I am Ann Lori Pierre. I am also the president, senior president of EHS, and if I could talk about my experience, I always knew where I wanted to go to college, but not everyone did. Not everyone does. And that's really tough because it's a hard decision, and we need more guidance with that. And our guidance counselors are short, and they're very overwhelmed right now. I literally have to witness the guidance counselors overwhelmed with students coming in because Decision Day for colleges is May 1st, and that's four days from now, probably even less. And it's just crazy to see it because I already know where I'm going, but I would love for my peers to be on the same page, and it wasn't from, because I already know where I'm going, but it wasn't from the help of the schools because I was curious, and I know during COVID time, like, nobody knew what was going on. The teachers didn't know, the students didn't know, nobody. And so I became curious, but if we had that guidance, if we had a push, if we had a plan starting from like freshman year, sophomore year, then it could have been better and more effective for them. And it's better to start now in sophomore year. If I had guidance with, I have a mentor, but it's not school-related. She helped me out, but I feel like if everybody had that person that would provide funding for them, school opportunities, college opportunities, internships, if that was available for them, it would be more smooth for, smoother for the guidance counselors. They would have less on their shoulder, and it would be better for the students because now everybody's under pressure. And it's really sad to see because I talked to some of the students. I talked to my peers and asked them, "Where are you going to college? What is your plan?" This year, a lot of them are not going. They're taking a leap here because COVID really affected them, and they didn't get the help that they needed. And it's really, really tough, and it's sad watching them, like the dreams that they had, like, crumble because they don't have that guidance, they don't have that push, they don't have the resource. And, and I really think this program, this project could really be effective because some of, most of the students who are in our school are staying in Massachusetts. They're going to local schools, state schools. So we're really just feeding into ourselves because they're gonna be working in the city. They're gonna be working in our, you know, community. So it would be great to nurture them, and it will provide them great guidance. And honestly, if I, I'm speaking for myself, but I know the students would want this as well. And yeah, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time. Do we have any speakers, Ms. Celestin?
Mr. Dennis Lynch.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, my camera's not working. I'm at my computer at home, but my name is Dennis Lynch. I'm the principal of the Pyleen School, 587 Broadway. I'm gonna speak to some specifics about the budget, particularly how it affects my individual school. And I know that some concerns have been brought up regarding my request to the superintendent for an additional assistant principal at my school. And I just want to briefly explain to all of you some of the reasons for adding another member to my leadership team. The Pyleen currently has 940 students enrolled in grades K through 8. This number will most certainly increase over the coming years, as they have each year before the start of the pandemic. Eighty-six percent of my students are designated by the Commonwealth as high needs, seventy percent economically disadvantaged, forty-five percent of my students are English learners, while eighty percent's first language is not English. Ten percent of my students have other special needs and considerations. I know that each member of this committee and our district leadership care deeply about our students, specifically the health, safety, and well-being of each and every one of them. Based on the size of my school alone, I feel that the addition of another assistant principal will greatly benefit the entire Pyleen community. Almost every other K-8 or middle school in surrounding cities or towns that compare in school size has at least two assistant principals. Most of these schools actually have a smaller student population. For example, the Ferryway K-8 School in Malden has 916 students with two APs, as does the BB and Salemwood K-8s with 903 and 1,100 students respectively. Chelsea's two middle schools, who serve students in grades 5 through 8, only have two assistants each. These schools have student populations of 670 and 600. A school the size of the Pyleen is the exception, not the rule, in terms of school leadership. As a former assistant principal at the Pyleen, being a student at the high school and teacher at Everett High School, I know firsthand the crucial role of the AP within our district. Along with the principal, APs are tasked with student discipline, academic achievement, attendance, school operations, and safety, as well as providing the important social and emotional supports needed. This is a fraction of the minimum required duties tasked with school leadership each day. I have an amazing teaching staff at my school with great students and families. My role as principal is to advocate for my school, and I take this role very seriously. As the father of three young children in grades kindergarten, 1, and 4, I want the best educational experience for them possible. As the principal of the Pyleen, I want no different from my students. I pride myself on supporting students, families, and teachers. Another assistant principal will help me continue this goal. With the faculty of nearly 100 teachers and support staff and 1,000 students, I believe my request to be justified. I am always available to any member of this committee or community to come by the Pyleen and speak with me personally about my requests. Of course, whatever this body decides, I will respect it 100%. And we will move forward and continue to thrive the way we always have at the Pyleen School. Our goal has always been the kids, and it always will be. Not only to educate them and set them up for success, but to help them be happy, well-rounded individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Any more people in the queue, please?
Yes, Counselor McGlafkin.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Mr. McGlafkin, Councilor McGlafkin.
Good evening. How are you?
We're doing well. So if you just state your name.
I'm sorry, Michael McGlafin, 9 Baldwin Place, Everett. I'm calling tonight to speak in a concern of why we're not utilizing the ESAR funds that have been allocated to cover some of these expenses, knowing that we have until 2024 to extend those funds. I think that we could do better if allocated the ESAR funds in a better, more productive manner than holding on to those funds.
Well, Mr. McGlafkin, that's supposed to be cross debating, but ESAR funds are a grant. Grants are not part of the budget. The budget is made up of the local contribution and the state contribution. Grants are not part of the budget. They are over and above the budget.
Mr. Parker, Mr. Chairman, the, the school department has an additional $11 million added to your budget this year compared to last year.
Let's not choose 9 million. It's 9 million.
10 million from the student opportunity.
9 million and the local contribution, a million bucks.
We're not gonna cross debate.
Because you're only talking about, I'm not gonna debate with you.
Okay, end of story. We'll discuss this at another meeting. Thank you.
Yes, we will.
I greatly look forward to that opportunity to set the record straight and to stop having my back put against the wall as a city councilor in this community. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I believe we had a letter sent in from Counselor Martins.
Yeah. Okay, we have a written statement from Counselor Stephanie Martins, so if I can read this, please. "My name is Stephanie Martins. I am the War II City Councilor. Our lower-income children attend the schools located in War II. It better reflects the priorities and visions for the future of the city. Wealthier cities have one thing in common: they are known to invest extra in human capital, and that being knowledge and education. Better educated children have more opportunity, and children with opportunity become adults with resources who will in turn enrich the infrastructure of the city. The extra investment that might be mischaracterized as a burden to homeowners is actually an investment to create more future homeowners to contribute to the pot. Residents with higher incomes and safer streets for everyone. Education is a direct investment on our residents. Investing in our children is not only a moral obligation, but is an investment into the future of the municipality as a whole. Our schools have been able to do amazing things with the bare minimum, but why limit ourselves in nickel and dime opportunities when we can do more? Similar to wealthier communities, gateway cities have one thing in common: limited resources for education. Providing only net school spending funding ensures that our lower-income gateway cities will systematically remain lower-income gateway cities. It keeps us right where we are, but we want better. We don't want just to, just a few success stories out of Everett. We want all students to be a success story so that Everett can be a success story as a whole. It is my hope that we can, as a city, find room in our budget to invest more than just the minimum on our children. We might, we want to grow, develop, improve our city, but also have the best, most qualified young people living in it. As elected officials, we have in our hands the unique opportunity to allocate funding that will define people's personal, personal futures by funding opportunities in much-needed resources that will open doors and shape the next generation of Everett residents." And that again was Stephanie Martins, Council Ward 2 from Lexington Street. Is there anybody else?
I do not believe so.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, as traditionally, three times, are you for or against the budget? And we'll see if anybody calls in. Is there anybody who's for the budget? Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the budget? Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the budget? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the budget? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the budget? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the budget? Hearing none on either side, I'd vote to close and adjourn this portion of public hearing. So move.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to close this part of the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You have closed this part of the public hearing. So with that, I'll open up to the next part of the public hearing, gotten school choice. And if I can, I'll read what was posted. "The Everett School Committee in accordance with National Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, will hold a public hearing on the subject of school choice on Tuesday, April 25th, immediately following the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 22 school budget." "The public can view this meeting on the public school Facebook page at facebook.com/everettpublicschoolsone word, as meetings are not yet open to the public." So with that, we have already, for the record, let's, let's, let's have a roll call vote as far as who's in attendance.
Mr. Abraze?
Here.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here. So we have five members present, of which Mr. Marconi is attending remotely. And again, as the previous public hearing, Mia Di Maria, student rep Diana Lewis, committee members Cardello, Pineresi, and Sani all have personal conflicts, could not make it tonight, and they send their regrets. So with that, do we have anybody on the line regarding school choice? I'll take that as a no?
No.
Okay. So again, I'll repeat it three times. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of school choice? Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of school choice? Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of school choice? Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition of school choice? Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition of school choice? And finally, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to school choice? Hearing none, I'll rule that that portion of the public hearing be closed. And I would entertain a motion to close that part of the public hearing. Roll call, please. So move.
Back then.
Thank you.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, five in the affirmative, zero, five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You've closed that portion of the public hearing. So with that, I'll make a, we will open up now as opposed to the special meeting in the school committee, again today, Tuesday, April 27th. For the record, let's have a roll call vote.
Mr. Abraze?
Here.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Five in the affirmative as far as being present with Mr. Marconi Barrows attending remotely. And again, Mia Call Di Maria, student rep Diana Lewis, school committee members Cardello, Pineresi, and Sani all have prior commitments, cannot attend tonight. So as we are now on the special meeting of the Everett School Committee, we'll waive the roll call. Well, no, we just did the roll call. I'm sorry. We can waive the pledge of allegiance. And I believe Ms. Limit had a request.
I did, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask for a moment of silence in honor of Ms. Kristen Fulton, who was an Everett community member that was a mentor and an inspiration to hundreds of young people, as well as the community that she served. She tragically passed away last Friday and leaves behind her, her baby daughter and her husband and her family, her sister, parents. And she left us three, three strong lessons: be kind, don't judge, and prayers for those in need. And so I respectfully ask for a moment of silence to remember and reflect on Kristen's life.
Okay, thank you. Give a moment of silence, please. Thank you, Ms. Limit. And I believe there's gonna be a candlelight vigil on behalf of Kristen this Sunday night at Glendale Park at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. Reading of the records. We, we, okay, so we, we don't have a reading of the record for tonight. That'll be for the next meeting on, on the May 3rd. We have public comment on, on the calendar. By our rules, public comment is for regular meetings only, but I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and allow public comment tonight if that's the will of the body.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and open public comment?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and allow public comment tonight for the special meeting. If I can have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, five in the affirmative. We have suspended the rules and we allow public comment. Do we have anybody that's in the queue that would like to speak on behalf of a comment? Ms. Celestin?
I do not have anyone in the waitroom.
I, I do. I do see, no, I don't. Hold on.
Oh, there actually is someone that's in here already. Samaga?
Samaga Palka Havel? Hi.
Out there. They just left.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We have nobody in the queue for public comment. I would entertain a motion to close public comment. So move.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to close public comment. Roll call vote, please. Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray? Yes.
Yes, five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You have closed public comment. So, roll one, number five, is Report of the Superintendent, Madam Tijuliani.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Parker, Chairman Parker, school committee members, and everyone at home. For item number one, tonight I ask for your approval of the district's FY '22 budget in the amount of of which $26,341,938 will be chargeback cost to the city. In addition, I ask for your approval of the district's special education transportation budget of $5,021,743.
I make a motion to approve the budget in the amount that the superintendent has requested?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for favorable action on the budget as Okay, motion is made and seconded for favorable action on the budget as, um, as written, as presented by the superintendent. Uh, with that, I will open up the floor to, uh, any, uh, comments or questions at this time. Okay, uh.
Sam, you can go first.
Eric, hey, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I just wanted to make the statement. We had a heated discussion last week, and, and I felt it was important to say, um, and first, I do want to thank the school administration for putting together a forward-looking investment plan that would provide for the greatest opportunity for our students. I'm also grateful for our state delegation that was successful in securing student opportunity funding at one-sixth, which will get us to full funding on schedule. However, two-sevenths is more than one-sixth, so we're still behind where we would have been, had this, had the Student Opportunity Act been funded as it should have. The reality is that we're in a different place than we were on March first, twenty-twenty, but not that different. Esser funding will be a great help in assisting us to recover to March twenty-twenty levels. But we all were very vocal in the fight for fair and equitable funding for our students. We knew we needed more in March twenty-twenty before we even knew what COVID was. Nobody saw this coming. Esser funding is designed to get us back to that place. The, the rest is our job to build on. This is a cumulative effect, so the, the gaps that we're seeing with our students now, they're not fully attributed to COVID. They've exacerbated it. However, this is a cumulative effect of underfunding, underinvestment, and I'm not placing it all on the city. I'm not placing it all on the state or federal. It's been, there's multiple layers, but the fact is, our students are the ones that pay for it. We can argue that we can cut foundation budget in order to make some room. For example, some of the things that we requested were, uh, student emotional, student emotional learning coordinators and student wellness to care for the whole student, re-engagement coordinators to make sure our scholars are not pushed out of school, enrichment and after-school opportunities to capture the unique spark of our young people and let them fall in love with learning at a young age in the K through eight level and build on that through high school. We could make cuts, but I went through the budget, as did we all, line by line. We can't put off curriculum updates when we have textbooks that are over a decade old. We can't put off personnel additions that will alleviate overcrowded classes and increase interventions for our struggling students. Our staff deserves raises, and they are contractually obligated to them. The asks that we made were all student-centered, and it looked at their potential and recognized that it was limitless with the right tools and investments. I hope the city administration will reconsider and will recognize that there are solutions here. Um, we can look at the chargebacks. We can look at, you know, um, some creative ways to get this done for our students. Education is an investment not just for our youngest resident, but for our community as a whole. And Ms. Pierre put it beautifully when she said, many of our students are staying close to home. Our students are our future residents, are our neighbors, are, they deserve every, everything we can give them and every investment, and they deserve every opportunity. And so with that, I thank you and yield my time.
Mr. Parker, you're muted. Did you recognize me?
Yes, Ms. Murray.
Thank you, sorry. Okay, so I just wanted to share some information that I think has gone, um, remiss. Unfortunately, I was not at the last meeting. If I had been, I would have brought up the fact that, um, at the state level, we have issues with funding that, as Ms. Lambert just said, already existed well before COVID, and COVID has exacerbated them. So I will give you an example. We have thirty thousand children missing from the public schools in the state of Massachusetts. We know that a third of those kids are in private schools now, and they may or may not return to our public schools. We know that a third of those kids are pre-K through first grade, and those kids will be back. And we have a third of those kids who are in new homeschooler environments and will most likely be back. These children are not budgeted for in the current budget, so when they arrive, there's no funding for them, and we're gonna have to figure that out. Everett, as a, as a city with, uh, fluctuating population and constant influx of students throughout the year, even before COVID, is definitely gonna see that happen once COVID resolves itself. And those numbers, that thirty thousand that we're missing in the state from the public schools who used to be public school students, a chunk, a good-sized chunk of those students are going to be Everett public school students. So I just wanted to bring it to people's attention that in addition to that, the census numbers are low. So because our census numbers are low, which is no fault of anybody at the city level or anyone sitting here, it's just an unfortunate reality of the fact that residents didn't all fill out the census, but it does directly impact budget. So as a result, our state and federal aid isn't gonna be reflective of what we actually need because our numbers don't reflect our population. In addition to that, the formula is skewed. So we're working on the fact that a school system like Newton that doesn't need it is getting millions and millions in COVID relief funds, and systems like Everett and Chelsea are not getting what they should get, again, related to census numbers and things like that. So again, we have shortfalling in those areas. So for all of those reasons, just on a simple level, we have an issue with the fact that we're underfunded. We knew that we were underfunded before COVID. We know that we're underfunded now. We know that it's gonna be worse. We also know that the mayor argues that, um, the problem with raising the foundation budget is a problem with raising taxes. I think people should know that the average resident in the city of Everett is thirty-five years old. What that means is the average residents in the city of Everett are of childbearing age. And if we don't invest in their families, they are not going to stay. The other thing we need to consider is the fact that we are at between sixty-one and sixty-five percent renters. And what that means is that the majority of the people in this city are not owners. They're renters. And the majority of owners in this city do not live here. Only thirty-eight percent of the, of, of the people who own live in the city of Everett. So when we talk about burdening the families and the, and the taxpayers, the taxpayer, the, the, the property owners don't live here anymore. They live somewhere else. So you're giving tax breaks to people who live in other cities where their children's school systems are paying well over a foundation budget so that their children can have every opportunity, and meanwhile, our families are made to do with less, always made to do with less. The answer is always no. I believe that a budget is a reflection of our morals and our values. And when we put forward a budget that literally says, "I'm sorry, families of Everett, but your children are only worth the bare minimum that we legally have to give you in order to educate them." I can't agree with that. We have to do better. We owe our families that. And when I ran for the seat and took this seat, I understood that it came with a financial responsibility of looking out for our families. And that means that we need to spend responsibly. It means that we do need to look at that Esser money and make sure that we're spending it to minimize the COVID impact that we've already faced. But it also means that we need to advocate when necessary and say, before COVID even happened, we weren't budgeting enough. All of the cities around us are giving more than the base foundation. Why aren't we? Why can't we? If our initial proposal to the city was too ambitious, that's okay. There could have been a counter. There could have been something. But instead, to come back to me, an educator, a mother, a homeowner, a taxpayer, a resident of the city, an aunt to nieces and nephews who live in the city, and tell me, "I'm sorry, but educating your children is a burden that I don't want to put on the taxpayers and the property owners," I consider that a slap in the face. No one asked me, as a homeowner, if someone said to me, "Your house rates are gonna, you know, your property taxes are gonna go up by two percent so that we can find some money to put into the schools," I wouldn't have batted an eye. And I believe that most of the families in the city would feel the same way. I could be wrong. I'm sort of surprised that there weren't more people at public comment, but that is honestly and truly the way that I feel. I just do not see how we can look these people in the face and tell them that this is the best we've got for them. The best we have for these children in this community is the absolute legal bare minimum? That's all we can offer our kids? Then where are our values? Where are our principles? Where are we spending our money? If not on our kids, what are we doing? I just don't understand. Also, I mean, it's important to note that residents who own and live in the city already have a twenty-five percent rent reduction due to the fact that they own and live in the city. So, I mean, it's not like if you own and live in the city, you're not already getting a tax break. The majority of that would, again, be on property owners who don't live here. So I just don't know why we're arguing about tax rates when we should be arguing about our human capital, our people, our children. This has been the most trying time in modern history, and we literally looked at our children and said, "Sorry, but you just don't rank high enough for more of our money," and for that, I'm ashamed. I know that the administration did the best that they could, working at foundation, but we're cutting too much. We need more. This is not okay. The mayor himself said that it was an aggressive plan that would attack the achievement gap, but it doesn't just attack the achievement gap because the achievement gap is about kids who are behind other kids. It was also an opportunity gap. This was gonna be an opportunity for us to let not just our kids who are behind, but our kids who are already excelling, to have more opportunities and to grow in ways that they can't even conceive of yet. And, and we're taking that away from them with no real reason when other communities around us, Chelsea, Malden, Woburn, Boston's putting twenty-seven million over what they've already spent next year alone, and they're well above the base spending. So for all of those reasons, I just don't know how we say yes to this budget and say no to our families. I just don't know how we do it. Thank you.
So, um, I recognize all the members that want to speak. Uh, the motion before us is favorable action, um, as it was read. So therefore, um, can we roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Ms. Murray?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. So we have, uh, three in the affirmative, two in the negative. You have, um, passed favorable action. Item number two, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Um, item number two is regarding the matter of participation in school choice programs as per Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve B. As has been in the case in previous years, the overcrowding situation at our schools does make it difficult for us to accommodate students from other school districts. So this is the moment when we, um, make the decision about whether or not we will be able to accept students.
I make a motion that we not participate in, uh, the school choice program.
I second.
Okay, motion made and seconded that we not participate in school choice. Uh, any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, five in the, uh, affirmative, zero in the negative. Uh, Everett Public Schools has decided not to participate in the school choice program. Um, as far as the regular order of business goes, there are no other, um, matters on the calendar, therefore, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So move.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Uh, can we roll call vote, please, for adjournment?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Uh, we have adjourned, and for those members that showed up for this most important meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And our next regular meeting is on May third. Uh, plan your calendar accordingly. Have a great night, everybody.